Good evening. If everyone could take their seats, we're going to get started. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is 6 o'clock PM on Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone that's here in our chamber, audience, as well as our listening audience at WCBU. I'd like to also welcome the audience watching on cable channel 22. The council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali, Councilmember Allen.
President.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young. Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler. Councilmember Rigenbach. Councilmember Velpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to ask everyone to keep your thoughts and prayers on the family of Mrs. Ernestine Jackson, who passed away a few days ago. Mrs. Jackson was the city's, City of Peoria's first equal opportunity and affirmative action officer for the City of Peoria. She was also a very longtime advocate and leader of civil and human rights in Peoria. She will be long remembered and respected in Peoria and throughout Central Illinois and the state of Illinois. So we honor her and we ask that you keep her family in your prayers. Her services will be held this Friday at 11:00 AM at St. Paul Baptist Church. Please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk?
We are at proclamations.
We have three proclamations and one recognition. The first proclamation recognizes Senior Center Month. We have Peggy Jackes, Jax? How do you pronounce it? Okay, Jackie. She's the founder and executive director of the Graceland Center for Purposeful Aging, joined by Cindy Johnson, the board chair. Welcome, ladies. The proclamation reads... Whereas every September, the National Council on Aging, NCOA, and the National Institute of Senior Citizens, NISC, celebrate National Senior Center Month with the goal of bringing staff at senior centers together to converse about the importance of promoting a positive outlook on aging by raising awareness of advocacy efforts that are often overlooked. And whereas research shows that older adults who participate in center programs can improve their overall well-being, thereby delaying the onset of chronic disease. And whereas the Older Adult Act of 1965, along with the laws creating Medicare, Medicaid, and Social Security, recommended that all communities have a designated center that focuses on the well-being of retired persons. Now therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize September as National Senior Center Month in Peoria, Illinois. Ms. Peggy, how do you pronounce your last name?
Hakkus.
Say it again.
It's pronounced in Spanish, Hakkus.
Hakkus, okay. You want to go ahead and begin?
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. As you heard, Peoria is the eighth largest city in Illinois and we're the only one in the top 10 that does not have a designated center for older adults. I'm a nurse by profession and I have a passion for the well-being of older adults, especially to enable them to age in place and to live their best life. And we know that sometimes when you retire, you're at a little bit of a loss as to what to do. And so senior centers across the country offer programs for people to socialize. We know that loneliness is a medical diagnosis and can cause harm to people for social isolation. So to socialize and to learn and to be physically and mentally and emotionally fit. So our goal is to create such a center. We've been given American Rescue funding from the Central Illinois Agency on Aging and some funding from the Central, the Community Foundation of Central Illinois, their Emerging Philanthropists Fund to start programming. So we are going to have satellite programs in the community to reach out so people are more comfortable perhaps in their neighborhoods. And then we're going to have weekly programs at the Life Together Center once a week to do outreach and we hope to continue to build momentum. We know that people that are older, there's 33% of our community is over the age of 50. So that's a lot of people that we can hope to serve. So that we appreciate the recognition and hope to see more of, you'll see more of us.
I remember you coming to talk to me maybe one and a half to two years ago and sharing your vision. So I'm really happy to see that that vision is becoming alive and well. And you also have great leadership in Ms. Johnson as your board chair. So we wish you the best and we hope to see Graceland grow and prosper. Thank you very much for your leadership.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation recognizes Hunger Action Month, and we have Ms. Audrey Camm, Executive Director of Midwest Food Bank, and Mr. Wayne Cannon, the manager of Peoria Area Food Bank. Great to see you both. Whereas one in nine people in Illinois struggle with hunger every day, including one in six children. When families are hungry, making healthier choices can be even more difficult. Whereas we are committed to taking steps to combat hunger and providing additional resources for those who live in our communities. And whereas we are committed to working with the Food Pantry Network, HOI, which includes Midwest Food Bank and Peoria Food Bank, Peoria Area Food Bank, to combat hunger and raise awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas more than 11,620 individuals in Tazewell County, 22,100 individuals in Peoria County, and 2,820 individuals in Woodford County are considered food insecure. Whereas the members of Midwest Food Bank and Peoria Area Food Bank distribute meals throughout its network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, mobile food drives, and other community organizations with the support of Food Pantry Network, HOI. And whereas the month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to engage the public in action, including volunteer shifts, social media shares, and donations to end hunger, one helping at a time. And whereas food pantries and food banks across the country will host numerous events throughout September to bring awareness and help end hunger in their local community. Now therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby proclaim September 2023 as Hunger Action Month in Peoria, Illinois.
This morning, just want, thank you for having us today. This morning, just a little short story. This morning, I was coming to work very early, about 7:00. And the Peoria Area Food Bank is located on the south side of Peoria, off of McBean. As I was pulling in, I seen across the parking lot, two of my fellow employees talking to a young lady who was laying on the ground, sleeping there. It appeared that she was there all night. Now, this young lady could have a host of problems. One of them could be homelessness, addiction, mental health issues. But those are all speculative concerns. But one thing that we can be sure of, that if she wasn't, she soon would be hungry, hungry. We've been coming here for the last five years, Midwest Food Bank and myself. And the City of Peoria graciously has been offering this proclamation to bring awareness to our community of the problems, the concerns of food insecurity. And for that, I say thank you. Because as a community, awareness is a piece of it, resources are a piece of it, concern of our fellow citizens, taking care of each other, is the most important piece. And like I said once again, thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. And I'm just very thankful for the collaboration with Peoria Area Food Bank and HOA Food Pantry Network. We have several events that we're collaborating on this year in September, starting with the bridge lighting on September 1st. September 16th, we'll have food drives at Kroger. And then on September 30th, we'll have Hunger Action Month, a walk. And that's at OSF North Peoria. And I will say, I'm fairly new to this role, but hunger is real in our region. And today, just today at Midwest Food Bank, we had 59 agencies from around our three tri-county area come through and pick up about 10,000 cases of food. We'll do the same tomorrow and we'll do the same the following day. And so my eyes have truly been open to the need for this kind of collaboration and we thank you for recognizing it.
The collaboration is amazing and we thank you and we appreciate your leadership. Thank you very much. Our final proclamation recognizes Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. While the Walker family could not attend, we have Emma Ward and Eloise Ellie Ward. Thank you for being here. Is that little Ellie? Okay. Hi there, Ellie. Hi, little Ellie. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children. One in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed by their 20th birthday. And whereas statistics show 46 children per day are diagnosed with cancer in the United States, and there are approximately 40,000 children on active treatment at any given time. Whereas the average age of a child diagnosed with cancer is six years old, and 80% of childhood cancer patients are diagnosed late with metastatic disease. And whereas in the last 20 years, only four new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specifically treat childhood cancer. Whereas the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of childhood cancer and the associated need for increased funding to carry this out. The additional financial stress placed on families is one that no one should have to bear. Luckily, hundreds of not-for-profit organizations at the local and national level, including the American Childhood Cancer Organization, are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support. Whereas researchers and healthcare professionals continue to work diligently to treat and cure children with cancer. Too many children are affected by this deadly disease and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. Now therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby acknowledge September 2023 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Peoria, Illinois. Ward?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Rita Ali, for having us here tonight. This is Eloise. She was diagnosed with T-cell lymphoma, February 28th, 2022. We just knew she was sick for a while, couldn't quite figure out what was going on. She spent a month in OSF before they found her lymphoma, but they don't even know what it really is. They just call it that because so many tests came back negative. But she just got sicker and sicker. At one point, she was in the PICU with a chest tube because her lymph nodes got so swollen in her chest. So bringing awareness in September to childhood cancer just means that there's more funding going to St. Jude. And maybe eventually they will figure out what cancer she does have. And if they would have had that funding available, they would have known by now. But I mean, she's here, she's a survivor. We are still fighting. She is done with treatment in June of next year. Before coming into this world, I didn't know how much it really affected people. One in four children will be diagnosed with childhood cancer, and that's a pretty raw number. Ellie is just one of three children at her elementary school who are either fighting or have fought cancer. And the oldest one being second grade. So that's pretty, that's a pretty real statistic right there. But yeah, so we just are very excited that we have Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Peoria County. As much as it is national, it should be by city, by town. Everyone should know about it and be aware and just know that it's not as uncommon as you think.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Thank you for keeping this at our attention. Thank you for your leadership. We will keep little Ellie and all the children with cancer in our prayers. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a special recognition for a very special woman. And I'm going to ask Councilman Chuck Grab to meet me at that center podium. And then I'm going to ask all the elected council members to come and stand behind us, join us. Thank you. I think there are a lot of friends, maybe former colleagues, maybe former students, educators, community members, maybe neighbors, certainly friends that are here to also celebrate this special lady. This recognition is on behalf of Arthur May Perkins, and it is presented by Councilman Chuck Grab.
Thank you. Well, the mayor and I were talking about people who have paid their dues to this community. And it just kept coming back to Arthur May Perkins. I had the privilege of serving the children of Peoria Public Schools for some decades with Arthur. And you always knew where Arthur stood. And she wasn't afraid to articulate her position at principal meetings with the superintendent. She was always concerned first and foremost with those children in her charge. That was her first priority. And when they didn't come to school, she found out why they weren't there. And if they came to school with dirty clothes or whatever it might be, they were less than presentable, she took care of that as well. She also served this community on the library board and for years on the PHA board and helped turn that PHA around during a very, very critical time. You don't know leaders when things are going well. You know them when they're tested and when there are problems. And Arthur May Perkins rose to the occasion every single time. She never once said, "Why me?" She knew why, because she was on a mission. I'd like to call on another former colleague of mine, and that's Hetty Elliott, to come on up and say a few words about Arthur May Perkins. Hetty, it's your turn now.
Thank you, Mr. Grab. And what an honor it is to be with my friend, my mentor, long-term educator. I can't think of anyone more deserving of this honor than Arthur May Perkins. Mrs. Perkins has touched every corner of this community, but most importantly, the south side of Peoria. I would like her family to stand up. I know some have traveled to see her. We have some, her son and granddaughter and great-grandchildren here, and many friends I see in the audience, former students, all to honor you, Mrs. Perkins. This breathtaking gift that the Historical Society is presenting is well-deserved. I'm going to introduce Mr. Ed Berry from the Peoria Historical Society.
Thank you, Hetty. I'll be real brief, or try to be real brief. I would like to just thank the City of Peoria, Joe Doolin, Leah Allison, and Matt Smith for all of their incredible support. When the decision was made that Harrison and McKinley would be coming down, they really worked with us and the whole community to try to preserve some mementos from those two buildings. And at McKinley, we were able to save a Joseph Petardi stone frieze that is just amazing and a wonderful piece of Peoria history. And at Harrison, as I was walking through the school with Matt to decide, what do we save? We walked into the auditorium and the entire stage curtain assembly, if you will, appeared to be in pretty good shape, even though the auditorium, which is, was an incredible piece of architecture, was not in such good shape. So we were able to save the entire upper valance of that stage curtain, including an H at the peak. And I started asking around, started by my dear friend and lifelong passionate Peoria educator, Don O'Day, who might we bestow this H upon in terms of preserving it? And immediately, Arthur May Perkins. And started asking others in the community. And there was never any question where this should rest. And so we're delighted to have saved this piece. Again, the entire city government and the community has saved this, and we're delighted to present it to Arthur May Perkins tonight. Thank you.
Arthur May, we're not done yet. As I indicated earlier, you served many, many beats when you served the people of Peoria. And one of those that I alluded to was the Peoria Housing Authority during a very, very difficult time. So look who wandered in here from the PHA. Mr. Cannon, please come on up.
And yet you still find me. I would like to thank Mayor Ali, members of the city council. I'm here on behalf of Peoria Housing Authority, its director, current director, Armika Crawford. We have in the audience one of our superintendents, Alex Sierra, and members of the community. I want to read what this says. And there was a time I didn't need readers, but these are just readers, okay? It reads, "In honor of your continuous commitment to the residents of the Peoria Housing Authority, we dedicate our Providence Point Recreation Center to now be named the Arthur May Perkins Center."
We're going... But we're gonna, we're gonna have at the appropriate time, we have Stacy Peterson here, and she's gonna get a microphone working. And Arthur, anything you would like to say to this group that is assembled, including these fairly nefarious characters behind me? We'd be happy to hear.
Yes, you've got them all standing up. And I was wondering when Mayor Ali was gonna put them to work and let them go back to their seats. Because this is just so heartwarming. I thought about this all day long. And I've never, never, ever thought I was deserving of any of this. I love children. I love what I do. And it was God's calling that put me at Harrison School at a time when Harrison School needed someone to love them. at a time when Harrison School needed someone to love them, love the parents, love the students. And I didn't go looking for them to knock on the doors like we should be doing now, telling Chief he can go with me. Now, knock on the doors and get those babies and bring them to school. But it was because I loved them, and I knew that education was the key for their success. And they couldn't get it at home, playing video games. And Chuck, I didn't wash their clothes for any glory. I wanted them to be proud of themselves so that when they came to school, they looked like other children, and they didn't smell. I had toothbrushes too. You take care of those that you love. And I loved that building he called Harrison until they started tearing it down, my granddaughter. I took all of my children. I even have one of my granddaughters that's a teacher now, because I took them there every year, all day long. I take them, they make them walk. They never got a summer, Bernice. They never got a summer. I made them go to school and work with the other children down there, so they never got a chance. So Tabitha today is a teacher, and she loves it, and she's a great teacher. She's a great, strong teacher, and I appreciate that because you need that today in the educational field. And I praise God for all of you and for this honor. Like I said, and for Carl. Carl is my baby. I tell you, he's something else. I did think he got shorter because I guess that is. You know? And I praise God for my family that came with me, my great-granddaughter, and these are my great-grandchildren. These are not great-grand, they're great-great-grand. And this is my son, Tony. So I appreciate all of them that came out tonight. And I thank my friends back there. I saw my best friend back there, Miss Nasty Bill. That's my best friend. She came, and I knew she'd get here, she had to crawl. So she was here. And then my other daughter that I, two of them that I adopted back there, Renee and Roberta. So I've got all kinds of children, and so I'll have them till the day I die, y'all. I'm not going to give up on children, and I hope they don't ever give up on me. I want them to know how much I love them and the things that I tell them. I'm tough sometimes. They say I'm not as tough of these two as I should be. Probably not. But I do get them every once in a while. But that's because, when you do, you do it because you love them. You don't let them just run rampant and do whatever they want to do. You have to be aware of they are. Like the chief says in that advertisement, "Parents know where your children are. Know where your grandchildren are. Know where your great-grandchildren are. Know where they are." You know, the worst thing that happened was what happened the other week. Denise, you did a wonderful job. It was a wonderful thing to see people come together because this community is a community of love. All of these people that you see around here are people that love other people. That's why they're here. That's why they're committed to what they're doing. And it doesn't have to be that God called me to do it. God called me, but He calls in love. And God is love, so I know all of you know God. So thank you so very much for this honor. I still say I don't deserve all this, but I appreciate what you've done. Once again, this is absolutely gorgeous. I don't know where Tony's going to put that at in the house. I'm sure he'll find someplace for it to go. And whenever you come over again to bring my fruit, you'll see it. And you'll see this too. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all. Thank you, Chuck. You are such a wonderful supporter. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor, for letting them do this. I appreciate it so very much.
They're all standing up behind you. I just want to close by saying, Mrs. Arthur May Perkins, you are a remarkable woman. You are a warrior for children's education. You poured yourself into so many lives, and, you know, many of those lives are here today. So many people love you. You've touched and changed the lives of so very many people. And you will go down in history as one of the greatest educators in this city. That's in this city, that's for sure. Thank you for sharing your life and your love.
That would have been a good picture. That would have been a good picture.
That's neat. I don't know where she's going to put that, though. She'll find a place.
A neat person.
Need a tissue?
I think I need one too.
I get to go across the street and say, talk to her. She lives right across the street from me.
I'm going to grab a clean ass.
Oh, yeah.
All right, see y'all later.
See ya. That would be fantastic. Council advises that there's no executive session tonight, just FYI. See, that'd be a minute. We're going to go ahead and resume. Madam Clerk, we're ready to resume. Thank you.
Okay. We are at the approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the joint town board and city council meeting held on August 22, 2023, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We have one town item. 23-302 is a request from the town officials to approve the August 2023 actual expenditures and to approve the September 2023 anticipated expenditures for the town of the City of Peoria.
Trustee Grab.
Thank you, Mayor Ali. I move to approve as outlined.
Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. By the way, Councilman Grab, that was pretty darn amazing. Thanks for your leadership.
We honor people like Arthur the way we did tonight, and we have many more like her, but she truly is right at the top. Thank you.
Absolutely. Madam Clerk?
We are at the consent agenda. 23-303 is a communication from the city manager and director of public works with a request to approve a purchase with Rarick Pacific Company for 702 new 95-gallon garbage carts for replacement in inventory in an amount not to exceed $40,914. 23-304 is a communication with a request to approve the low bid and award a contract to Illinois Civil Contractors, Inc. for the Kickapoo Terrace Roadway Reconstruction Project in the amount of $443,322.74, with an additional authorization of $44,332.26 for contingencies, for a total contract award of $487,655. 23-305 is a communication with a request to approve the signed application for a Class H temporary outdoor liquor license for an event to be held by the Madison Preservation Association in the parking lot on the corner of Madison Street and Hamilton Boulevard on September 30, 2023. 23-306 is a reappointment by Mayor Ali to the Public Building Commission with a request concur of Brian Mingus. 23-307 are appointments by Mayor Ali to the East Village Growth Cell Committee with a request concur of Robert Anderson, Edward Pezek, Alethea Suggs, and Steve Catlack. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Are there any items to remove from consent? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to remove item 23-304.
Items to remove. Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
23-304 is a communication from the city manager and director of public works with a request to approve the low bid and award a contract to Illinois Civil Contractors for the Kickapoo Terrace Roadway Reconstruction Project in the amount of $443,322.74, with an additional authorization of $44,332.26 for contingencies, for a total contract award of $487,655.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I just wanted to say I will be supporting this motion, this item on the agenda. I would like to thank the Public Works Department and the city staff for taking the time to come up and examine this project that has been a problem for the residents in that city for, I've been told, at least a decade. So I'm sure they will be so happy and elated once they're able to have a street instead of gravel in which to drive on. So I would just like to thank you all. And with that, I'd like to make a motion for approving item 23-304.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any other discussion on this item? Cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at first readings. 23-308 is a communication from the city manager, corporation council, and director of public works with a request to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance proposing the West Lamont Avenue Special Service Area.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to actually turn most of the first readings over to our corporation council to walk through these.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's a bit of history with this, so forgive me for speaking a little longer than normal on a project like this. But if you'll turn to the last page of this council package material, you'll see an exhibit. page of this council package material, you'll see an exhibit of the folks on Lamont who had opted for, indicated a willingness to participate in, and actually a number of them sent money in to participate in what we were operating back then as the 50-50 sidewalk program. As our public works department has explained in previous budget discussions, they started to have very significant struggles finding contractors to bid these projects because of the piecemeal approach to a block. And you can see on this where you see the green parcels, they would have opted for and actually sent us money to do this, but the red parcels did not want to participate. And the yellow parcel, we didn't get a response for. So apt to the name of the 50-50 program, 50% of the people on this block of Lamont wanted to participate and 50 did not, or didn't respond. So the public works department, because of this and where this was going on in a few other areas, decided to withdraw that program. It was very inefficient in a city that has all the lane miles and all the sidewalks to improve, to pay such a premium to get the contractors in to do the work, but also to have an outcome be piecemeal. So there would be areas of refurbished sidewalks and areas where the sidewalks weren't done. Because of that history, Councilman Grab was particularly sensitive, having had people send us money to participate in a program, and then we sent them the money back and said we're not gonna go forward, and felt that we needed to meet with them to talk about their needs in their neighborhood. And so we did. And public work staff and Councilman Grab and the city manager at different times participated in small neighborhood meetings out there with the 14 residents who decided to come down the block and sit with us and talk about what was possible. And so staff had developed a few different options, but the option that they selected is before you tonight as a special service area. What we came up with was that the city normally would not undertake a mill and overlay of the street anytime soon. But if the residents would pay 50% of the mill and overlay, we would utilize that operational opportunity to go in and replace the curb and gutter that had been filled in over time a little bit with lapping of some of the previous pavements over the old asphalt. And so we'll have an improved stormwater system on that street, and our stormwater utility will pave that part of the project. The residents will get that improved infrastructure, along with the mill and overlay that they'll pay 80% of in the special service area fees. Those fees will be applied over 10 years, and the average cost per resident per year is $350 to about $700 some odd dollars. And so we polled the residents, and we felt we got responses from a majority of the residents that they want to participate in this program. So what's before the council on first reading is a proposal ordinance for the SSA, Special Service Area, that'll be before the council for consideration on passage on September 26. We will have a public hearing in October on the issue, and then we have to have a 60-day period where folks who don't want to participate, if 51% of the residents and 51% of the owners sign a petition opposing this, we won't proceed with the project. Staff is predicting from the responses we've received that because of the support, that will not occur. And January will likely be before you, presenting you with the ordinance establishing the SSA. The project will occur in 2024. The residents will start paying in 2025, and they'll pay for the next 10 years. The city will cover the costs of the rest of the project. Again, the stormwater utility for the curb and gutter and the 20% of the mill and overlay. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to address them. I'm glad to see our public works director, Mr. Powers, here as well. Thank you.
Questions for Director Powers or Council Hayes? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a comment. When I was first elected, one of my first meetings was with Storm and Norman and Charlie and about this particular issue that I inherited from my predecessor, and Councilman Grab took it over once the maps changed. And I want to commend Councilman Grab and staff for coming up with a proposition to address this issue. These neighbors have wanted this issue addressed for several years now. I think this is a good opportunity as a pilot, if you will. That's something that we can possibly utilize throughout the city, especially when it comes to addressing the premium issue that we know is sidewalks for residential areas. So I just want to commend everybody for being a part of this. I'm excited to see what comes from it, and hopefully this could be something that we can consider for future implementation throughout various districts in our city. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. You want to make a motion to receive and file?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file. Item twenty-three, three oh eight.
Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Councilmember Grab?
I think Councilman Allen summarized it beautifully. It's like Montalongo, Allen, Grab. I think this approach will be an approach we can use for other areas in the city that have no clue when we'll ever get to their neighborhood. Here, people are actually willing to invest their own dollars because it's so unknowable. We have a 50-square-mile city, so hopefully if this works well and we get this passed, Councilman Allen and I have been talking about this off and on for several months. We'll use this in other places as well. And I know that the staff has worked very hard to devise this program in concert with the neighbors, and I appreciate the number of times that staff has gone out to West Lamont to respect the wishes of the people who simply want to make their neighborhood better. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Hats off to staff and also legal counsel and everybody involved in providing this strategy. I have a motion to receive and file. If there's no other questions, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash three zero nine is a communication from the city manager and corporation counsel with a request to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance repealing the temporary moratorium on tobacco licenses.
Council Hayes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item connects to the next two items as well on the agenda. We certainly want the council to repeal that moratorium, but not until they take up and perhaps pass the changes to establish a regulatory regime on our tobacco licenses. I'm fortunate to have Maz Perkins and Lee Allison here to explain those next two items, but to this item, since it goes with those other two, I would appreciate if there'd be a motion to receive and file at this time, and then we can discuss the next two items.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Kelly. Seconded by Councilmember Seer to receive and file. Discussion. You want an actual vote?
Just to receive and file because the substance will be in the next two and repealing the moratorium.
Oh, I understand. Okay. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Twenty-three dash three one zero is a communication from the city manager and corporation counsel with a request to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 18, Article 14 of the Code of the City of Peoria regarding cigarettes.
Council Hayes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On this one, I defer to City Attorney Perkins to describe this item.
Good evening, everyone. As you're aware, there's a 90-day tobacco moratorium on tobacco licenses that went into effect on July 11. This moratorium gave city staff the opportunity to review and suggest revisions to the current cigarette ordinance and any pertinent ordinances in our municipal code that needed revisions. Taking into consideration council's concerns regarding the surplus of tobacco retailers who exceed 50% or more tobacco product sales, excess crime surrounding the locations of tobacco retailers who exceed 50% or more of tobacco sales, and the fact that tobacco products are regulated on a state and federal level at a higher standard than other forms of commerce, staff proposes the revisions that are in front of you today. A summary of the revisions is a newly imposed two-class system for tobacco retailers within the city. A Class 1 tobacco retailer would be less than 50% of gross sales being tobacco products. These would be your local Hy-Vee or Kroger, for example. Class 2 retailer, Class 2 tobacco retailer would be 50% or more of gross tobacco sales, of gross sales being tobacco products. These would be your tobacco-exclusive product shops. Existing licensed tobacco retailers will be assigned a class to assess a yearly fee going forward. The yearly fees being proposed is $500 for Class 1 and $1,000 for Class 2. The Class 2 license fee being higher due to the additional amount of work on city staff. Class 2 applicants would have to apply for approval through the special use process and at the same time request to expand a cap, expand the cap of Class 2 licenses allotted to be issued by the city. This additional fee, or the additional $500 for Class 2 licenses, would be a potential for, on city staff, to review documentation to confirm a specific class. For reference, Class 1 is being proposed to be capped at 125, which is a little shy of 25% of more than what is currently issued. What's currently issued is 103, what would be proposed Class 1 licenses. And Class 2 licenses is being proposed at being capped at 15, which is the current amount of 50% or more of gross tobacco products retailers. Staff would monitor the Class 1 cap and request adjustments as needed. There is an additional item after this specific one regarding the Unified Development Code, which would go hand-in-hand regarding the Class 2 special use process, which Leah Allison will present on. This is just the first reading, so I invite you to contact myself or corporation counsel regarding questions or concerns.
Can I ask a quick question, Ms. Perkins? Relative to Class 2, you said it's recommended to be capped at 15?
Correct.
We are currently at 15?
Correct.
So what would happen if we got a request above the 15?
They would have to go through the special use process and request an expansion of the current cap, which would be at 15 at the same time.
Okay. Is there a number beyond that? I mean, is there a recommended number beyond the... Do you understand what I'm saying? If you go beyond 15 through the SSA, is there another cap recommended or not?
I'll defer to corporation counsel on that.
So this is a technique often used by municipalities in the liquor arena, and they don't want any more liquor outlets. The law has many times tested the issue of the legislative privilege and deference that's afforded courts in a cap of this nature. There's far less discretion for this council dealing with the denial of a special use permit. The very nature of a special use is that the council has already determined that that use is appropriate for that area with special conditions and considerations. So you've already gone most of the way to approving the use when you have a special use, and that's what's in place here. But in order to allow the council to exercise discretion with a much higher likelihood that that discretion will be tolerated and supported by the courts, we put this process in of having a legislatively established cap of the number of licenses. And therefore, the courts will give you much more, will grant you much more deference in those decisions than they will on your decision on a special use. So the council's free to adjust that cap anytime it chooses that this is appropriate.
I understand.
And so the issue is, how do you say no successfully? And this is the way we can allow our council to exercise its discretion without, with minimizing the risk that a court would take a different position.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Perkins? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Ms. Perkins. So currently, we have 15 standalone tobacco retail outlets in the city of Peoria technically right now. And then we're gonna cap it at 15, and then if anyone else would like to apply, then they would have to go through the special use process. Okay. Sometimes I'm not the brightest crayon in the box, so I have to talk things out. So that sounds great. Do you foresee, though, as far as the trend of tobacco retailers, I'm trying to think about how do we balance enforcement, protecting our residents, but also being business-friendly? And so has the trend of tobacco retailers, obviously, it's expanded last several years, but do you foresee this possibly being a negative connotation to, you know, the market per se?
No, because we're so, the cap on Class 1s is higher than what it's currently capped at, and there is a process in place for a Class 2 potential applicant to have a new location within the city of Peoria through the special use process and by applying to council to expand that cap. There's still opportunity there to be business-friendly inside the city of Peoria. It's just a matter of control, as corporation counsel stated.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to add, this is extremely business-friendly. We have many retailers in the city who struggle to make ends meet, and in many neighborhoods, we have a want of certain retailers we would like, like grocery stores, even small grocers. They need the opportunity to have a profit item, like tobacco items, and not have those opportunities to create a mix of products available for the public, an amenity, that is reduced or impaired by a single product retailer in the tobacco arena. And so we look at this as being extremely business-friendly to those businesses that offer a broader array of products for our, for our, for our residents. Retailers who wouldn't be in areas without the ability to have those profit items and not have that opportunity diminished by having single product retailers near them taking those sales. And so this is very business-friendly for the types of business that we want to attract to our neighborhoods. And this is where we want to give absolute discretion to the council about saying no or yes to a single item retailer. Thank you.
No, thank you to you. Thank you to Ms. Patel and, or Ms. Perkins, excuse me, and the staff for the intentionality and foresight on this item. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'd like to make a statement. First of all, I very much agree with the spirit of this proposal. I think it's a very good proposal and one that I hadn't really thought about, even though I read through it, I hadn't really thought about the ramifications of the cap. I would like to, however, complain a little bit. We have any number of fees in our city that are, an excuse for the fee is that, well, it's going to take more work by the X department, in this case, the legal department. Now, those fees go into the general fund. They do not go to the legal department at all. We figured out a way to get a little more money. The legal department is a budget department, just like the rest of our departments. But we can pick on somebody, and here we're picking on a business we're not crazy about, but we do this with other businesses too. And you say, well, you know, it's going to cost my department more money to enforce this wonderful thing, so let's raise a fee. But the fee isn't going to that department at all. I don't like this kind of fiction. That's the cost of the license, that's the cost of the license. Um, if that's the cost of the license, that's the cost of the license. I'm not in much in favor of charging for licenses either, so you have to know where I stand. But this kind of excuse, where, in the case of, uh, uh, rental registrations, you know, we have, uh, raised our fees and raised our fees and raised our fees over time. The enforcement side of rental registration has ebbed and flowed, ebbed and flowed. It has nothing to do with the fees that we raise. It's just an easy way to make money on a business we don't like very much. And he, here we go again. I will vote for this, but I would like to bring to the council and the public's attention that this, I, I don't believe that this is the way we ought to be conducting our fee business in the city. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hayes, for this clarification earlier. Uh, Mr. Manager, just a couple of quick questions. The, it's my understanding that Class A already exists, the $500 already exists. That's not a new fee, is that correct?
Um...
I'm Ms. Perkins, I'm sorry, maybe?
Yeah, sorry, I, yeah, correct. So the current license fee is 500 for all tobacco licenses.
So the only new fee right now, Ms. Perkins, would be the, uh, the 15, uh, Class B maximum number we have right now, of today, of a thousand dollars. That's, that's the only new fee, correct?
It would be additional.
Thank you very much for your time. Madam Mayor, I'd like to, uh, move to receive and file this request.
Okay, that is seconded by Councilmember Valpula. Also, uh, Mr. Manager, did you have some additional commentary?
I just wanted to clarify that in, in our, the way that we budget revenue that's generated by department, it is posted in each general fund department. So if there's revenue that is collected for fees by the fire department, or by the legal department, or by the community development department, it is shown and reflected in that budget. When we audit at the end of the year, when we have our audit, there is a, a listing that shows the amount of general taxes we have, and there's also the amount of revenue that's generated by each of the individual departments. It is reflected in the general fund, and we'll be happy to show that, uh, in, in a subsequent, uh, budget presentation, we'll show that and make it very clear where those dollars go.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, I, I'm aware of that. I, you know, but it does go into the general fund, and the departments have X number of dollars allocated to them, okay? The money in the general fund is fungible. It doesn't go to that department. I understand what you're saying. The thing is, I think oftentimes we use an unpopular business to raise a little extra money, and we say, "Well, this costs, this costs the department." The, all the departments are incurring costs all the time. That's what they're there for. And, uh, so I, I appreciate what you're saying. I still think it's odd that it's unpopular businesses that have to pay higher fees, or, let's say, they're not popular with the general public, so we can get away with it. More, as, as I would put it, we can get away with it. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager.
We have a motion to receive and file. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Clerk?
Twenty-three dash three-one-one is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code relating to retail tobacco sales.
Counsel?
Thank you. Uh, part of the Class Two element requires, uh, additional activity related to the granting of the special use permit. And so, um, Leah Allison is here to describe the changes to our zoning code that's required in order to undertake that additional activity, review those special use applications, and present a recommendation to council.
Thank you, Counsel. Madam Mayor, council members, um, so, yes, this is the other piece of this equation with relation to proposed ta, tobacco regulation. Um, the Unified Development Code currently lumps tobacco as just any other form of retail, nothing different. But the proposal before you aligns with the licensure side. It creates two classes of tobacco, retail sales, and also alternative nicotine products. So it's trying to capture a broader, uh, definition of tobacco and alternative tobacco forms. Class One is, uh, sales, we, gross sales, less than 50%, and those are allowed as, by right, permitted uses in your commercial, your downtown, your industrial, and your form districts. Class Two are 50% and greater of gross sales. Those are special use only, only special use, in your commercial districts, your downtown, your industrial. They're not permitted in any of the form districts. So that's a distinction I want to make pretty clear. Class Two, special use, but not permitted in any form in the, in form districts. Any questions up to this point? So it closely matches with the licensure side, but we are creating two classes in the zoning Unified Development Code as a permitted use for the smaller Class One and a special use for your Class Two, which is your 50% or more gross sales. Okay. Councilmember Graham?
Moved to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Seer.
Madam Mayor, if, if the motion could be receive and file?
Uh, receive and file.
This is the first...
Moved to receive and file.
Receive and file, thank you. Seconded. Um, any other discussion questions for Assistant Director Allison? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Maybe just one quick question. Can you talk to us a little bit about enforcement?
Enforcement of...
The License One or Two. I mean, we will enforce the numbers and, uh, specifically more like age, no, the, uh, age 21, correct? Minimum age.
Uh, if you don't mind, I'll respond. So our, uh, police department assists us along with our community development staff in observing what's going on, and the police department conducts, uh, special operations to enforce, um, the limitations of sales of tobacco products. So, um, we'll have enforcement in that arena as well as enforcement on observation by those same police personnel on the issue of if a place is, if we've missed a spot that's really more than 50%. So if that occurred, we'd come back to council to try to rectify that. Um, we want to be careful for the folks who are presently licensed not to affect their expectations, but going forward, new entrants would fall completely under this regime. So we might come forward and say, "Hey, on enforcement, we found a Class One that really needs to be a Class Two, so we're gonna treat them like these 15 other Class Twos that we made, 'cause we just missed this one." They wouldn't go through the special use process, but a new entrant to the market would, and that's an important element. So these enforcement actions will be over time. The other element of enforcement will fall on, uh, the, um, uh, shoulders of our finance department. Um, as part of the licenses going forward, our staff will have the opportunity to tell a retailer, "Hey, we want 12 months of your tax returns to the state." They do a sales tax return, and they do a tobacco return. We'll be able to look at that material and figure out this gross sales issue. That'll take some time and talent, so we'll be auditing places for that. That's another additional reason for this, uh, fee. It's different for the Class Twos to support not only the enforcement issues, uh, with regard to the observations by law enforcement officers on the street, but also our finance department on the backend on audits. Those are the enforcement mechanisms we'll have in place. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hayes. Mr. Manager, can we make sure that the finance department gets their 50% of the revenues, please? I'm just teasing you, Mr. Cal. Just teasing.
No response. Okay, we do have a, a motion to receive and file. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We have a presentation. Twenty-three dash three-one-two is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request to receive and file a presentation by Illinois American Water Company regarding an overview of lead service lines in the Peoria service area. And on your desk, there is handed out, um, additional material with the presentation from the Illinois American Water Company.
Okay, Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, we have with us Kyle Smith and, uh, some of the other representatives. I'll let Kyle introduce them from, uh, Illinois American Water, uh, to talk about their low-income program and their lead service lines. Um, you know, we, um, and, you know, the water company and public works, uh, work, you know, often very closely together as, as issues happen in the, in the city, uh, with water main breaks and other projects that get planned. So, um, one of the biggest issues that we're facing right now as a, as a state is the lead service line issue, and so we wanted them to come give this presentation to you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Appreciate the opportunity. I think, uh, at this point, I have spoken to, to most of you at some point. For those of you, uh, that I haven't, happy to see you and, uh, look forward to talking to you sometime in the future. Again, my name's Kyle Smith. I'm the Western Division Manager for Illinois American Water, and, uh, my office is based out of Peoria here. I have with me tonight, uh, Anna Kubis, and she is our Senior Manager for External Affairs. And so Anna is gonna talk about our income assistance, uh, program a little bit on the, the last side, I believe. Also with me is Melissa Lydican, and she is a, uh, Senior Manager of Special Projects for Illinois American Water, and, uh, but more specifically, she heads up our lead and copper program for the entire state. Um, she is an expert in lead, and we're happy to have her here tonight. Uh, part of what, uh, she's gonna speak to you about is the existing lead that's within the city and what Illinois American Water is working on to get this lead changed out and get it out of folks' homes and businesses. It's important to come here and get involved with you all because, uh, as we continue to send out communications, both, uh, through email, through text, uh, through bill on certs, more than likely, you are going to get phone calls from your constituents, and we want you to be prepared and have the correct information. And, and basically, we're asking for your, uh, assistance in partnering with us to help these folks, uh, get to us and so they can participate in this lead removal program. So, uh, Melissa has a lot of info. I'm gonna step aside, and, uh, she'll just be scratching the surface of it here tonight, but, uh, we do have the clicker, and we do have some, some handouts with materials as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Thanks, everyone, for having us. So like Kyle said, we really wanted to take this time to talk about not only lead service lines, but also lead service lines in Peoria specifically, as well as the updated EPA, federal and state EPA regulations regarding lead service lines. Before we really begin, though, I wanted to take a step back and explain what a service line is. Until I came to the water company, I had no idea either. So the service line is a section of underground pipe that connects the water main in the street to the customer's home. That line is segmented into two pieces of ownership. So going from the main in the street to an outside meter pit or curb box, a shut-off valve, is owned, maintained by the utility. Everything else after that meter pit in the street or after that curb box is owned, typically maintained by the customer. That's where the big change in this regulation in terms of lead service lines is really coming in. EPA is putting a lot of that ownership back onto the utility to identify and get those lines replaced for those consumers. Little bit of background on lead. Lead was not fully banned in the United States until 1986. It was not that long ago. It was most commonly used as a plumbing material in those service lines from the 1920s to the 1940s. Unfortunately, in Peoria, we found some lead service lines installed into the mid-1960s. Pretty rare. Um, we now know those lead service lines can cause a huge detriment to human health if that lead gets into the drinking water. We also know that the main source of lead in drinking water is those lead service lines. And that's really what led to the regulatory changes with both the federal and the state EPA. Like Kyle said, we're really only gonna stretch the surface. We're gonna focus main on two, on two main points in those regulations, both state and federal, first of which being a comprehensive inventory. So the regulations require us to identify the material of those service lines on both the utility-owned side and the customer-owned side. That initial inventory was due April of this past year and was submitted to the EPA. We have a final inventory due this upcoming April. Second caveat of that is a replacement plan itself. So the replacement plan is due next April. Our first replacement plan is due next April to the EPA with a final replacement schedule due April of 2027. So that plan is gonna take into account the number of lead service lines we've identified, the number of galvanized, requiring replacement service lines we've identified, and the number of unknown lines we've identified, and that's gonna dictate the speed at which we need to get those replaced. Those schedules are also dictated by the EPA, and they kind of fall into buckets, the smallest of which being 7% per year for up to 15 years, and then that, if we have tons of them, the biggest bucket we have is 2% per year for up to 50 years. Right now, looking at our initial numbers, we'll show them here in a minute, Peoria's fallen about 3% per year for about 34 years is where we're anticipating. Luckily, we've identified some more since April, but we need some help in getting more identifications done. So a little bit of background on what we've been doing to identify those materials. Fortunately, on the utility side, we have historic records that we can look back on, and we have successfully gone through all of the records for Peoria. So those can be anything from tap cards, so it's an original document when that service line was installed. They would write down what materials they used, put it in an envelope, it went in the file cabinet. We dug all those back out. Um, any work orders, project records we had, any material information we had on a paper document in the office, we've pulled in, and we've got a significant amount of utility-side materials identified in doing that. To get the customer side, though, even our best historic record, it was never practiced to write that information down. A contractor would run that line out, we'd tap onto it, and we'd move on about the day. So even with our best records, we don't have that data, so we had to get a little creative. We're right now in the process of running some analytics to try to tell us, where are we, where do we think we're gonna find the lead? Peoria County was fortunate enough to give us a dump of data to give us construction year-built, so we know when homes were built in Peoria. We've also been pulling in, well, what do we know? What's our known inventory? What did we know used to be there before we replaced it? So what, where are the areas we're gonna find lead? And vice versa, where are the areas where we don't think we're gonna find any lead in that community? We, of course, are going to pothole to verify those predictions and assumptions before we make any material changes, just so we're all on the same page. Potholing, since that's also probably a new term, involves us drilling a series of holes, usually three to four. Um, we use a vac truck, so they actually vacuum the dirt straight up on top of the pipe so we can visually see what it is. We don't want to excavate someone's yard without being sure that we need to excavate that yard. We're gonna, of course, do those potholings on both sides of the service lines to verify those analytics to make sure we're heading in the right path. And then the last thing that we're throwing into that analytical database is operator knowledge. We are fortunate to have some people who have been working in our water systems for 30, 40-plus years. We're using that knowledge from what they've seen out in the field, the areas they know are traditionally gonna have lead, gonna have galvanized, and using that into it. The last piece is really where we're gonna start asking for the customers' help. There's no way, shape, or form, we can touch every property in Peoria to determine what's inside. We need customers to help us. With our inventory submittal in April, we were required to put our inventory publicly available, so it is on our website. This is just a snapshot of that map. Every property is identified by a circle icon, and I apologize, it's a little fuzzy on the screen, but it should be in your packet as well. Um, every property is identified by that circle icon. Left side of the circle, that material would be the utility side. Right side would be what we've identified that the customer has. We've enhanced this map to build in self-reporting for that customer. So if they click and we say we don't know what their side is, we've given them pictures, a step-by-step guide to determine what they have. It's pretty simple, actually, to do. They need a magnet and a key or a coin to scratch with, and we give them pictures so they kind of have a better idea of what they're looking for. We ask them to submit that picture back to us, and then we respond and update our map accordingly. accordingly. Up on the screen, you'll see our most recent submittal for Peoria. This was our April submittal for what we have in terms of service lines. And I know we spent a lot of time talking about identifying utility-owned side as well as the customer-owned side. When we submit to the EPA, we have to classify that entire line. To simplify that, if I've got lead on utility side and I'm not sure of the customer side, its entire line is going to be a lead service line. Vice versa, if I have an unknown on that customer side and I know that I've got copper on the utility side, that entire line becomes an unknown service line and has to be included in my replacement schedule. It's really crucial to identify as many service line materials as we can prior to that next April submittal and then those April submittals going forward. If you look at the submittal that we've got showing on the screen, retail connections just means that we sell directly to the customer as opposed to another water provider. So in Peoria, we have just over 64,000 of those identified. About 10,000 are already considered lead, and we have almost 20,000 unknown service lines currently. Communications is another piece of the regulation as well. I've only kind of highlighted a couple things here in terms of our current process. So annual notification is required. So once we submit our inventory, if a customer has a lead service line, we're required to tell them every year until that line is replaced. Those letters went out in April. We'll be sending them again next April. Our plan right now is to enhance that letter a little bit now that we'll have a replacement schedule that we're going to be submitting to the EPA. We want to be able to give customers at least some ballpark information of where they're going to fall out on that schedule. Even if we're looking 34 years out, when do we anticipate to be in what communities? And how are we going to attack that? Other two focuses we have in terms of communication is lead education. Most customers don't know anything about where the lead comes from in their drinking water. They don't know how they can minimize their exposure. They don't know any of that. So we're really trying to get the word out on that. We've developed a series of videos. We're going to eventually start pushing to social media. Right now, the main focus, though, is that self-reporting piece. So for Peoria specifically, the plan is to send a bill on cert to all customers. You do have a copy of that bill on cert in your packet. Send that to customers in November, try to drive them to self-report. And then, as it's been working in other areas, the following month, we follow up with an email. You also have a copy of that email in your packet. Just directs them straight to our website. We have a bunch of information in terms of health effects of lead, tips for minimizing their exposure, but the big piece is we want them to self-report as much as they can. Any customer that self-reports to us is responded to, whether they report a lead-based material or a non-lead-based material. Just those that report lead material get some more information back. They get our lead fact sheet. It has the health effects, all of the information that we need to give them. And then they also tend to get a little bit of information about replacements. In terms of replacements themselves, we have been actively replacing lead service lines in Peoria for the past 10 years. It initially started in conjunction with main replacement projects, so as we replaced the main on the street, we would swap out the service lines that needed to be swapped out. In more recent years, it has expanded, and last year we did about 350 sole lead service line replacements in Peoria. When Illinois American does the replacement, the replacement itself, as well as the restoration of that customer's yard, the costs are covered by Illinois American Water. We have not charged a customer for a replacement. The replacements are also given a one-year contractor warranty from the contractor that does the customer side of the replacement. We do per plumbing code, need a licensed plumber to do that piece of it, so that work is warranted for one year. We also provide those customers with a pitcher filter. So studies have shown that when we replace a lead service line, it actually allows sediment to break loose and could actually be more harmful to the customer in those short timeframe immediately following the replacement. So we've been handing out pitcher filters for a little over two years now, and that's actually in advance of the federal regulation to do so. And then the last thing we do when we replace a service line is we sample the water and provide the customer with those results. That is also done at no cost to the customer. If we have results that are back higher than we anticipate, we will advise them to flush and re-sample. We don't want to walk away from a replacement knowingly causing harm. We want to make sure that their levels are back down where we would expect them to be. That is lead service line replacement and lead service line information in a nutshell. I'm going to kick it over to Anna really quickly to talk a little bit about our new low-income assistance program, but I will be available if anybody has any questions.
So just briefly to mention, we did launch a new customer assistance program back last month. It is our income-based discount program. It provides a discount of 70% on the volumetric water consumption charges to eligible residential water and wastewater customers. We've partnered with Dollar Energy for the administration, so folks can go online, or they can also call the phone number on the screen to fill out an application. Eligibility is solely based on the number of residents in the household as well as the income, and the income's set at 150% of the federal property income guidelines. They apply once Dollar Energy deems them to be eligible. After also submitting a income verification, they let us know. We apply it directly onto the account, and then they do have to recertify annually for it, but they will be notified prior to when that time comes. If you've got any questions, we're happy to answer them at this time, but certainly we'd love to take, if you have the opportunity, to encourage any individuals, any residents that are of limited income to take advantage of this program, please feel free to do so, as well as encourage them to self-report for our lead program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I'd like to start off with a couple of questions. The first is, can you go back to the Peoria Inventory 2023 submission?
Yeah.
Okay. So my question is, how did this look 10 years ago? What were the biggest difference between what we see in the 2023 submission and 10 years ago?
So I don't have it readily available in front of me, but this is held at the EPA, so there have been inventory submittals for at least the last five years. It's been an annual requirement for water providers to submit an inventory. The big difference is up until this most recent submittal, it was only looking at utility side. So this is the first real look we have at a classified line that contains both sides' materials.
Okay. So you can't even look back five years?
I could look back five years on the EPA's website, but it'll only give me the utility side.
Okay. So generally, are you able to say what the major differences are?
Unfortunately, the major difference is that unknown categories, as we identify more lead and as the conversation about lead becomes a bigger topic of conversation, the lead number goes up and the unknown number goes down. Eventually, we'll hit the tipping point where we have unknown gone, and we can see that lead number trickle down.
Are you able to share where the geographical areas that have the highest lead within the city? I mean, can you speak to that?
I can't speak to it right now. If I had a computer, I could pull up our inventory map, and you can see that a little bit better, but we could get a lot of that information to you if you'd like to see it.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah, we can definitely, we can share that map with you and get it to you.
Okay. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for being here. Great presentation, a lot of great information. I have five or six questions for you that are really based on my personal experience, some of the questions that I get from my constituent, basically. Number one, as I walk the 5th District, the sidewalk of the 5th District, I see some water lines that are because of sink, that pavement have sink, the sidewalk have sink. Where do our constituent call to get, because some of these pipes are pretty high on the sidewalk, very dangerous. Is that one of your, should I tell my constituent or our constituent to call the Water Company, number one?
Yes, they should call us. That if we've got a curb stop that's sticking up or a piece of sidewalk that has sunk down around it, that would be our Peoria operations team that would be responsible for repairing that if it's the curb stop. And so they could either get ahold of us through our 800 number, or I can certainly provide you with some local contacts as far as the local superintendent, the local supervisor for the distribution department here.
Same question for fire hydrant. I mean, before becoming a councilman, I always thought fire department was in charge, but I found out the last six years, again, it's your responsibility, correct?
Yes.
So if they need fixed or repainted or something like that, they just call your water company?
Yes, and we are required by the ICC as part of our annual regulatory process that we do test and inspect every hydrant in the city every year.
Okay.
Now, that inspection does not include necessarily paint. It includes whether the hydrant actually functions as it should.
One of your slide, that one right there, I believe, talks about Peoria. When we talk about Peoria in that slide having 64,419, is that these, is that the city of Peoria or is that Peoria County?
That is the Peoria Public Water System, so it contains, I'd have to look at the map to see, do you know the district boundary lines better?
Yeah, the district boundary lines are bigger than the city of Peoria itself.
So it would be Peoria, obviously Peoria and Peoria County. Now, the retail connection, 64,000, does that include businesses and residential also?
Correct, yes.
Okay. What is the life expectancy of a lead pipe?
Well, unfortunately, it's a long, long time, and that's why there's so many of these that are still in the ground so many years later.
Is that, so would it be fair for me to assume, though, that in the 5th District, north and the town, which is newer than downtown, obviously, if you have a house or a commercial building that was built, let's say after 1990, would that be fair to not expect to see any lead pipe at all? Is that correct?
That is correct. It was outlawed in 1986. It was primarily used from 20 to 40, but as Melissa pointed out, we've seen it as late as the 1960s here in Peoria.
No, my last question, you don't have to answer, it's kind of unfair question, I think, because of insurance. You know, I get the call and I get the mailer myself about insurance, you know, the part that we are responsible from the curb to our house, right? Now, if it's in the 5th District, if the building were built after 1986, 87, you said, should we buy that insurance? Or if you find some lead or if they default, the pipe becomes default or breaks or whatever, is the owner, the homeowner, responsible to fix that pipe?
In a typical situation, yes, on the customer's side. So that area from the meter pit or the curb stop back into the home, if there would be a rupture or some type of issue, that would typically be the homeowner or business owner's response or responsibility to replace that. With the lead program that Melissa is speaking about tonight, that's a bit different. If we're coming in to replace a lead service line, that's where the utility is going to take responsibility for that entire line into the customer's foundation or basement or wherever the first shut-off is within the residence. As far as the insurance goes, that is a completely separate company that we are in no way affiliated with.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. It's great. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I want to follow up on the last question there that Councilmember Seer had. Did I understand that right, that if someone has a lead line that breaks on the customer's side, we're making them pay to fix it, but if we decide to come to their house, we pay for it?
No, if somebody has a service line break and we go out as the Water Company, we investigate it, we determine that it is either lead or galvanized. At that point, we're stepping in on an emergency basis, and the whole line would be replaced at our expense into the customer's home. Now, if lead is not present, if it's a newer home, a home from the 90s, the 2000s, whatever, where they've got a plastic service line or a copper line and there is no indication of lead, at that point, yes, it is the responsibility of the home or the business owner, you own the water line from the curb stop into your house.
Okay, so if it's lead, we're taking care of it regardless of when it actually breaks?
If it is lead, we are fixing it at our cost. And again, we will have, as dictated to us by the Illinois EPA, we will have a schedule coming out of when we plan to do that work, but if it happens on an emergent basis, we're replacing it right then and there, all the way into the customer's home, yes.
Next question regarding properties that have had the structure taken down. Does having lead lines under the ground still pose a risk, or do we go back and do anything about that if it doesn't go all the way to the street?
Yeah, if a home has been, if a home or business has been abandoned or demolished, we go ahead and we cut the line off, we just remove it from the rest of the water system. It stays in situ in the ground. It's not hurting anything in the ground, but we do remove it from the system. And then should the lot be sold or be developed in any way, of course, that structure would then get a brand-new water line with compliant materials all the way back to the main.
Okay. And last question, can you give me an idea of when you started replacing these and about how many a year are getting replaced?
I'm going to let Melissa speak to that.
So it's hard to pin down the actual year that they started. We started in conjunction with main replacement projects, and it was about 2012, I believe. In 2018 was when we really started doing standalone lead service line replacements. Last year, I do have the number, we replaced 350, and we're on track to do another 350 this year. Looking at that replacement schedule, though, and what we're anticipating, that number's going to likely triple.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you all for your time and your presentation this evening. Just a couple of questions. What does line replacement process look like? You know, if someone gets their line replaced, is their water interrupted for a certain period of time? What does that look like for our residents?
So the resident's water is turned off for a period of time to get that replacement done. With the customer piece of it needing to be done, and that's coming into their basement, into their crawl space, there is some coordination with our contractor to let the customer know, A, the plan of attack for their property specifically, as well as the time and date that they'll be there to do that replacement. So they do work hand-in-hand with the customer to make sure they're fully aware of what's going to happen and when that's going to happen. In terms of replacements themselves, there's largely three options. The one we really don't want to do is the full excavation of the line, but we do have some boring options where we can bore a new line along the other one, as well as a pull method where you can pull out the old line and pull in the new one at the same time. That way, we're not doing as much damage to the yard. We'll have a little bit of restoration to do, but it's not a full, complete destruction of their front yard or any open trenches, yeah.
So what would be the estimated timeframe you would see someone without water during this period?
Usually about an hour.
About an hour, okay, okay. And then as far as engagement, and I think Madam Mayor made a great point, I think it'd be good to see the inventory map, so that way if there's areas of our city that we need to intentionally target that have a higher volume of lead pipes, we need to definitely do that. But as far as engagement, the letters are going to go out to whoever has the water bill in their name, I'm assuming?
Currently, yes. That's the easiest way for us to pull it. We're also going to try to cross-reference with the property owner, because ideally in those rental situations, that's who we need to communicate with. We had some internal dialogue back and forth of, I do want the resident to know of the health effects, and they need those tips for minimizing exposure, but the replacement process needs to largely drive through the homeowner. Currently, right now, for our planned replacements, we do send a certified letter to property owners to kick off the process, and then we bring in the tenants in those conversations as we get closer to replacement.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your presentation. I have a couple of questions. Number one, you're talking about residents self-reporting. How would I know? I mean, what is it that I would be reporting on my property?
Yeah, great question. So for the map itself, once they get to that survey, we walk them through the full process. So step one is identifying that line where it comes in. We have pictures of different types of lines. So for a lead line, you're looking for that bulb. But the main process is directing them to take a magnet, just a standard magnet off your fridge, put it on the pipe. If it sticks, you're done, you have a galvanized pipe. We ask you to take a picture and send it to us. If it does not stick, then the next step is taking a key or a coin and just lightly scratch the pipe. If lead's going to scratch pretty easily, it's going to be bright shiny silver in color. If that happens, you've got a lead service line, take a picture, send it on. Copper will scratch, it's going to look like a shiny copper penny. Brass will also scratch, but it's going to look a little bit more gold. All of those pictures that we've been getting, we look at to verify that what we're seeing is congruent with what you're telling us. We save the picture, we update the material, and then respond back. It also has been really helpful in the other areas where we have sent the It also has been really helpful in the other areas where we have sent the emails. It's starting that dialogue. I've had a lot of customers, I will email, report that they have galvanized, but their picture isn't lining up and we can have a conversation about it. I can call, I can send somebody there to help them with it. I don't expect every customer to be able to self-report with no issues. We want to be able to open up that dialogue that we can help you, it's just we don't have the time to go into every home to do so.
Thank you, that's very clear. In one of your slides, you spoke about post-replacement water sample. So if you come to my house right now and you take a water sample, you can tell, is that right, whether I've got lead or not?
Correct, yeah. So we actually do a couple of different types of sampling. This was just really scratching the surface of the entire lead regulation. Post-replacement sampling is something that we have always done, just as a best practice. We actually take two samples. We replace the line, we flush the line for thirty minutes and take a sample, and then we instruct the homeowner to flush their entire home for thirty minutes, every tap open for thirty minutes and then close them. We ask that the water then sit in the line unused for about six hours, usually after once you go to bed, don't use anything, and fill another bottle first thing in the morning. We give them back then their lead results. So typically for the EPA, we want a number below fifteen parts per billion. If that comes back below, we notify the customer, tell them have a great day, let us know if they have any questions on the restoration and move on. If it comes back above that fifteen, we then advise them to re-flush and we do another re-sample. We generally do that up to two times to make sure that everything is back down below that fifteen and they are within, I'll say, safer limits. No detection of lead is what we ideally want, but that fifteen is the regulatory level currently.
So it seems to me that for an initial assessment, just checking that incoming supply pipe is easier than all those wonderful things. Okay, thank you for that. And also just for clarity, I'm not sure, this refers to Councilman Seer's question. You go beyond the city in your boundaries. Do you take in the entire county of Peoria? No, I didn't think so. Could you?
No, we do not take in the entire county.
Can you give us a little bit of an idea or is it?
Yeah, I mean, we service West Peoria, we service Bartonville, we service as far north as Cedar Hills, so you're up into Lake of the Woods. And so there are some other disparate areas that we service as sale-for-resale customers, so they still own their own distribution system, but we supply them with water. We have those arrangements in Dunlap, we have that arrangement with Hannah City. So there are several areas where we make and produce water in Peoria and then it's pumped out to outlying areas.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you all for this very informative presentation. I just wanted to follow up with on a couple of questions. One, Councilman Seer talked about the age of the home. Based on that, if the home is newer, built after a certain time, is it, is it fair to assume that all the older properties would be those you would be targeting? How do you come to those decisions? And the other question I had had to deal with, location, you said three hundred and fifty were replaced. Would you have, where are those located? Have these been in older properties generally?
Generally, they're older properties. So the, we'll start with the second question. The replacements from last year are a mixture to what Kyle had said before, planned replacements, so a little bit of main replacement projects, same thing ongoing, and then we have some where we've identified that lead service line, worked with the customer. We try to stay in the same communities, but that emergency bucket does throw us out randomly as customers call and identify that they've got a leaking service line, our field rep will go out, identify that as a lead service line, so they fall into that emergency replacement bucket. So they're essentially all throughout the city of Peoria that we're doing all of those replacements currently. To the first question, I don't remember what it was, could you repeat the first question for me?
It had to deal with, you know, you said you're wanting people to self-report. Is it, is it fair to assume that if you live in an older home, you should, you should self-report because there's a big likelihood that your house has lead pipes?
It is most definitely fair to make that assumption. You definitely want to look. Those pipes, that service line, as well as your internal plumbing, was dictated by the plumber who put it in. So we know that it wasn't banned until nineteen eighty-six, it was really commonly used. We have those dates that we have, but we also have plumbers who, I have this material on stock, so I used up what I had and that could have gone further into, that could be very well where we're seeing potholing results showing homes built in nineteen sixty-two with a original lead service line. We would have never expected to see that, but that's what the data is starting to show us. So that's where we're being really careful with that analytical results. The first easiest thing for us to pull was homes built after nineteen eighty-seven. Let's take a look and see. We potholed a sample set of those, didn't find any lead, so we felt comfortable moving those materials from unknown to luckily, the EPA gives us a classification of not-lead material undetermined. We didn't have to be specific on those. That was the safe bucket to move. But this older bucket, anything pre-nineteen eighty-six, we don't have the confidence in the data yet until we get some more potholing to tell anybody that you're a hundred percent safe without looking first.
Last question, you have primarily, it sounds like, been talking about people who own their properties. And I don't know what the numbers are, Mayor, but I'm sure we've got probably a large percentage of rental properties, old, old, old rental properties. In this case, would it be, how, would it be up to the landlord? How do you, how do you access, how do you get, how do you identify those folks?
Unfortunately, I'll say, the regulation requires us to communicate with the property owner. The property owner is the one who has to sign off on the agreement. We've been putting our lead information, those health effects information, the ways that the resident can minimize exposure, and as many customer-facing materials as we can, so we get that in front of those residents. Before the replacement itself, it has to come from the property owner.
So all those renters are just out of luck?
I will say, the Illinois American Water requires that the water account be placed in the person's name that's actually residing there. So that's our best way to get to the renters, is to hit, to get with them through the bill inserts. And a lot of times, we have their information as far as their cellphone number, their email address, so that we can text them alerts if there's a boil order or a main break in their area. So that's how we're getting specifically to the renters, to the folks that live in these homes. But as Melissa alluded to, we need to work with the actual property owner to sign the contract that would allow us to come in and actually do the work. So it really is, it's a group effort to try and involve both parties.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Vespa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the presentation, it was very informative. So my understanding, I just want to make sure I get this right, is that you have to tell the federal government the final inventory by April of two thousand and twenty-four, so that's just, that's just a few months away, so you've only got, only got a few months for people to self-report. My understanding is, and what happens if they self-report after that date?
So our inventory, the final inventory is due April two thousand and twenty-four. We are still required to update that annually. So as we really start the replacements in two thousand and twenty-four, that final replacement schedule is not till two thousand and twenty-seven. So truly, our final, final is more accurate to be that two thousand and twenty-seven date. We still have some leeway in the regulation to continue to identify and update both the inventory and that replacement plan. One thing that we also did not mention was if a customer does have the ability to refuse replacement, homeowner, tenant, they have the ability in the regulation to say, no, we are not interested in having you replace our lead service line. We are required in the regulation to notify the Department of Public Health for any customer that does refuse.
Okay. Just one other question. You say you replace these at cost. Isn't there federal dollars available to replace these? I know Congress has appropriated, you know, billions of dollars for this sort of thing. Are you guys able to acquire those?
There are no federal dollars available to Illinois American Water.
Oh, okay, so it's to government municipalities and such? Okay, all right, thank you. No, no further questions, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Valpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a clarification question. So what are the, I would say, allowable levels of lead in drinking water? I know it should be typically zero, but then at what time, at what point of time it's a red flag? And how do people know that it's time for them to? I mean, just following up on question of self-reporting, when will it tell a customer to say, I'm not having a good water? Because there are several kits available online, I just Googled and found out there are several lead test kits available. But then, what was the limit that you should educate people that this is exactly when you, you're done with it?
So the EPA stance is there's no healthy level of lead in any water, but we do have regulatory limits. So the, this actually touches on the pieces of regulation we didn't really talk on. We have historically, per EPA regulations, done compliant sampling for lead, either every year, every three years, whatever they tell us to. The detection limit is one. One part per billion is what we can detect lead into water at. We've always operated under what we consider an action level. So fifteen parts per billion is that action level. The federal regulation update revision that's going to effect in October of two thousand and twenty-four has a proposal to implement a trigger level at ten part per billion. So we need to start taking some action sooner. Don't have to run the full gamut of action, but we need to start doing some things a little bit sooner than we traditionally would have. That compliance sampling tests on a ninetieth percentile basis, so we test, in Peoria specifically, we test fifty homes. Of those homes, we want twenty-five to be from copper sites, fifty to be from lead sites, and then we analyze where did that ninetieth percentile fall? So really, where did the forty-fifth sample fall? Historically, we've always been below that fifteen. We do preventative measures at the plant itself by adding a phosphate. Really, that's just what we could consider corrosion control. So we all know that water and metal tends to corrode over time, so our corrosion control inhibitor allows us to blind the inside of that pipe with a measure so that water's not absorbing those metals. The whole point of that corrosion, that sampling that we do per the EPA is to make sure our corrosion control is doing what it's supposed to be doing. So just because that customer has a lead service line does not necessarily mean that the levels in their water are above the fifteen. It may not mean that they're at a one or a two, they're going to fall somewhere in that range. So we try to get a full sample set of customers to find out where Peoria as a whole is sitting or where that water system as a whole is sitting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the information.
You're welcome. Councilmember Greit?
Yes, what do you replace the lead lines with? What substance?
Generally, plastic is most common. There is some specifications on if it needs to be type K copper if we're running too close to the sewer line. There's a separation variance, so if that pipe is going to be in the same pit as a sewer line, it has to be type K copper, but more specifically, we generally use plastic.
PVC?
It depends, PVC, HDPE.
What studies have been done? Have there, I assume there have been studies done indicating the safety of what you're replacing the lead pipes with?
Correct, but unfortunately, a lot of those plastic pipes have only been in the ground for so long, so we don't have historic data on them. Plastic is generally less corrosive, even replacing with copper. So that compliant sampling I just spoke on, we also test copper in the water. So as your pipes are corroding, lead can corrode, copper can also corrode. Fortunately, right now, plastic, we have no evidence of corrosion on those plastic pipes.
Is PVC or plastic the preferred route to go?
Unless you can't get a sewer separation, then you have to go type K copper.
Also, Manager, I think you'll agree that Kyle Smith has done an outstanding job during his tenure here. We don't want you to go anywhere. When we've had problems, it seemed to be very naughty, he gets right on it. And I think that's important for our constituents. I know in the case of my house, it's built in eighteen eighty-five, had a little knock on the door a couple of years ago, I think, maybe not quite two years, said, you got lead coming in. And I would suspect that a lot of the older neighborhoods, the Valley and Bluff, may very well have lead, whether it's above the threshold that's considered to be safe, you know, would require some testing. I would imagine through time, the lead that might test out being below the threshold might through additional time go above that threshold that's considered to be safe. And that's why we're just generally replacing it, because we know eventually it could be problematic.
Correct, and even with the current sampling that we do to make sure that the corrosion control is working, part of the federal regulations requires us to double that. So right now, we do fifty in Peoria. Once October two thousand and twenty-four hits, we'll start doing a hundred per year in Peoria. The regulation is written to essentially test ourselves back to every three years like we were in the past. Any levels that we get that are above that trigger, above that action, is going to hinder us from going back. We'll have to continue to sample at a more routine basis to make sure that the public is where we need them to be.
And then, Manager, as you know, our Public Works Department, Director Powers is out there. Before we put down new pavement, we have a discussion with Illinois American Water Company concerning the state of the pipes underneath, because we don't want to lay a new street and have to tear it up. Are we articulating pretty well on that still? And Kyle, I believe you're contacted by Public Works, and go ahead.
We have, I think, and I think Mr. Powers would agree, we are trying to work hand-in-glove on these projects, because if you're going to be there and you're going to be tearing the road up and you're going to be disrupting your neighbors and your friends and your constituents, we certainly want to get there as well and replace that main. And that way, neither of us has to go back for several years. And it's least impactful to your, again, your constituents and the residents of the town.
A hug. I, we, I would agree with everything that you said, Counselor. We have standing meetings with Kyle and his team, and all of them have been nothing but immediately responsive to things, even when things don't go right, and sometimes they don't. But that's exactly what we're talking about now, we have scheduled meetings quarterly, and that's our topics. What do you have going on? What do we have going on? We don't want to put down new pavement, we don't want you to cut it, we know breaks happen, but those meetings are going great. Again, I would also applaud Kyle's leadership and what's going on here and just how it's gone since he's got here and his team as well. I mean, all of them have been very responsive.
Thank you, Director. And Kyle Smith, you have an inventory of where your pipes are, and you have a pretty good idea where there may be some failure issues based on the projected lifetime of the pipe that's laid in the ground. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we track all that data and it goes back decades, so we can certainly determine a break history or an issue history on a specific piece of pipe. And we have pretty sophisticated modeling as well that looks at pressures and it continues to look at that break history. So we're able, that's one of the things that allows us to work so well in tandem with the Public Works Department, make those more educated replacement decisions, so that our dollars frankly do go further when we can combine projects as well.
When we did the Sheridan Road project, we kept having problems basically at Florence and Sheridan. And if you haven't been out on Harker Lane to visit Illinois American Water Company, you should go, it looks like they have a NORAD screen. And I guess you could detect pressure problems.
Correct.
Because we were having the lower pressure, we were having showerheads coming off.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's an impressive system, it's a pretty sophisticated system. I, of course, would, we'd love to have anyone that would, would want to come and be interested for a tour. We'd be happy to take you through our main water plant as well, which is, is quite impressive there. We're, on a typical day, out of our there. We're, on a typical day, out of our main river station, we're making about 20, 22 million gallons a day.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a couple more questions. What do you estimate the cost to be to replace one of these lines?
I knew, I knew that was coming. That was going to be a question, and it's a great question. So, again, Melissa touched on, there's a few different ways that we can approach the line. So a lot of it depends on that, whether it would have to be that full-blown open trenching, or whether we're able to do boring. It depends on how deep of a front yard somebody may have. It depends on whether or not we have to cut out their driveway, cut out a piece of sidewalk. I'm beating around the bush. I would say we're in the range of probably $12,000 to $18,000. Complete line from our side into the customer's home, do the full restoration.
And obviously, this has been a pretty big project, and from the sounds of it, will get quite a bit bigger in the next year. So are you able to use local labor for this, or are you having to outsource it?
Peoria has a bit of a unique setup. Here are local labor, our work groups. They have these service line transfers and these service line replacements. That is protected work. So that is all done with company forces. Now, we can't work on private property. We can't work on the customer's side, and that's where we partner with local contractors to do that portion of the work on our behalf.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to receive and file.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Final question that I have is, relates to the new income-based discount program, which I was pleased to see. I just wondered, will you include a mailer in the bill to notify residents of this opportunity?
Yes, we are working through. I think Peoria residents should be seeing those come through, starting this, they might already be receiving it, or in the mail. A copy of it is found on the left-hand side. It's the last page in the packet. So you can see a copy of that. And we do have extra handouts. We'd be happy to leave some at City Hall, and as residents come through, they're welcome to take that. There's a QR code on there, and information on how they can apply.
Social media as well?
Yes. Social media is coming on it. We were slowly kind of rolling it out and making sure that the administration of the program was going flawlessly for our customers. And as we've seen that continue, and we've seen the applications come through, we've seen the discount applied to our customers, we're going to continue kind of going full-blown out when it comes to the communications plan on it.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much for your presentation, Mr. Smith, Ms. Kubus, Ms. Littichan. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
So we have a motion to receive and file. Please cast your ballots. Councilwoman Gordon Young?
I'm sorry.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clark?
We are at regular business. 23-313 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to approve an agreement with Phoenix Community Development Services for operations of Haven Group Home in the amount of $111,000.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn it over to our Community Development Director, Mr. Doolin.
Counsel, the item in front of you tonight is a request for additional funding for the Haven Group Home. If you remember correctly, a few months ago, we approved some additional emergency solutions grants, which is one of our entitlement funds for this project. This project was created in January of this year as a direct result of a great idea by Phoenix Community Development Services of how we can be more responsive to the encampments that were occurring in the city of Peoria, specifically the one that was down across from the Mark Twain Hotel. They repurposed one of their sites that had previously been housing veterans that was no longer necessary in our community based on the other services that were providing to veterans experiencing homelessness, to create a low-barrier group home option for those that might not be the best fit for our shelters. At the time when they started this, we knew that funding was going to continue to be an issue, because there was not a direct funding source available. They were able to repurpose some of their funds that got them through the first six months. Our emergency solutions grant got them through the next three months. This funding will get them funded and operational through the end of the year. And then Senator Kayler has put in a funding request that was approved for them for $250,000 that will hopefully get them through the most part of 2024 while we continue to work with them for other funding options. I'd like if the mayor would allow me to introduce Chris Call, who I think can talk about the success that they've seen at this location, and just answer any questions about their operations.
Sure. Happy to have Ms. Call.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Just basically, I want to report very quickly that since we started this program, it's modeled off of a bridge housing program that was being used for our veterans, that we ran that program for 11 years, demonstrated success in bringing in very vulnerable homeless vets with mental illness and/or severe substance abuse issues, and in under six months, stabilizing them and moving them into permanent housing. So logic said, let's try that then with our medically vulnerable people living in encampments. So this is not meant to replace traditional shelter. This is just really meant to focus more on people with severe and acute needs in addition to getting into permanent housing. So since we started in January, we've enrolled 34 people. The daily capacity is 14. So we've enrolled 34 people, and in that time, we've had 20 exits. 10 of them have gone to permanent housing. 10 of them have not been positive exits, but of the 10, only five returned to homelessness. Four are back in encampments, and one returned to the streets. The other five went into other institutions or something like that, jail, prison, for various reasons. We have 14 currently enrolled, and of the 14, nine of them are currently scheduled for permanent housing placements. So I think, you know, that tells the story. The only other thing I'm going to share is that when we first had this idea, it was at a meeting with Councilman Grayb and City Manager Urick. And one of the very first things that Councilman Grayb said is, "Can anybody do something with the guy who's lived in his car for 20 years on the South Side?" And that gentleman lives in this program today. So I think it's really important to note that for 20 years, that if somebody lived on the street, declined all services, did not want to come into any kind of housing. The night of the homeless point in time count, the last week of January, we found him in his car near death from frostbite. We transported him to the hospital, and he was discharged into this program. So again, you're talking about somebody who, literally, his digits are falling off in our facility. He is where he needs to be, at his pace. He will transfer to permanent housing when he's ready. Coming off the streets after 20 years is a very big transition. We also have health care coming in and providing services to people such as him with acute health care. So we have a Dr. Staple from OSF has been coming in and providing medical respite care, just like she does on the streets with us. So that's kind of my synopsis of where we're at. I appreciate your support of the program, and I think it's an investment that's showing, showing that it can pay off.
Thank you for sharing that story as well. I was wondering what happened to him.
Any questions for me?
Any questions for Director Doolin or Ms. Call? Member Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple questions, if you don't mind. Just one question, oh, two questions for you. How are your, what's your setup? When my constituent asks me about your operation, I tell them you're a non-for-profit. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the, what percentage of the $111,000 we're talking about tonight goes to the people that really needs it versus, you know, versus operation?
Correct. Our indirect costs are capped at 10%, and oftentimes, they're below that. So at least 90% of everything is going directly into the care. This program is unique, because for such a low number of people, it is a high cost per person. Part of that is, you still have to have 24/7 staff, okay? At the current prevailing minimum wage, you know, just to staff the facility and to do the food service that's brought in, you know, right there, you're talking $200,000 a year for nothing but that. And then when you layer on utilities, upkeep of the property, insurance, and stuff. And so we definitely, I mean, I'm not allowed to make a profit, you know, by law, and so we keep our costs as low as we possibly can.
Thank you very much for all you do for our community. Question for Mr. Manager. I was told this money comes from ARPA money, I believe. When do you see us starting to talk about the budget for next year?
Well, I think that tomorrow, we're going to be talking about the strategic plan, trying to get that wrapped up. And then we're currently working with the departments on having them present to us their proposed spending plans. We want to see what the council finally adopts with the strategic plan. And then we'll be back probably in a month to start really getting into the budget, you know, full steam ahead.
So some of this money is on spend money from ARPA, correct?
Well, it's unspent ARPA dollars that are really have been set aside within the neighborhood programming that we talked about previously from the Community Development Department.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember, if you can, is there a second?
This would be a move to approve.
Move to approve, yes.
This is a move to approve, yes.
Move to approve, yes.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. New discussion, Councilmember Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a comment. With the daily work that I do, having services like yours is amazing. There's such a huge need, and there are so many days where there's just this huge struggle to try to figure out where we're going to place people. And the services, I cannot speak so enough about how much your work is needed, and how grateful we are for the work that you do. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, we have a motion to approve. If there's no more discussion, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clark?
23-314 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to approve an agreement with the Peoria City County Health Department to provide funding for the city to complete additional homeowner roof replacements using Edward Settlement Funds in the amount of $125,000.
Director Doolin?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is brought to you, the Peoria City County Health Department approached us a few months ago. They were awarded funds through the Edward Settlement Funds back in about two years, three years ago, before COVID happened. COVID happened, and they obviously shifted a lot of their resources to specifically dealing with the pandemic. Because of that, they had a much shorter timeline to implement the programs they were doing. And a lot of their programs that they proposed to do with their money went into people's houses, did asthma testing, other lung health things. And due to COVID, people were not welcoming them into their homes. So they have to get this money spent within about a year. So they approached the city and asked if we had any ideas of how we could help them spend this money that they could pitch to the Edward Settlement Team and get it spent quickly. One of the programs that we run on an annual basis is our roof replacement program. It's an amazing opportunity for residents that are selected. Often, the demand out, the supply of the funds doesn't meet up with the demand of the funds. So one of the things this year that we've been very lucky is, in addition to CDBG money we have budgeted, we also got an IDA grant to do additional roofs. But even with the ability this year to do about 55 roofs, as opposed to 25 in the past, the list of eligible applicants was about 80. So when we identified a program for them to use specifically in 61605, where the money has to be targeted to, we went through that remaining 30 households that were on our list that were not selected. And there were seven households in 61605 that would be eligible for this programming. The Health Department thought it was a fantastic idea to give us this money to do that. They pitched it to the Edward Settlement Team. They agreed that this would be appropriate. Redoing roofs on houses does affect lung health, does affect the long-term health of the residents by reducing moisture, mold in the air, and whatnot. So that is the request in front of you, is to just accept the agreement with them, accept the $125,000, and we'll be able to do the seven roofs for those residents in the next six to nine months.
That's great. Mr. Manager, does this require a budget amendment?
This would be the receipt of the funds. In order to spend it, it probably would require a budget amendment. It doesn't have it here, so we'll have to bring that back to you.
Okay, so tonight, we vote on the agreement, and then you'll come back with the budget.
We'll come back with the budget amendment.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Doolin. Just one question. I'm very concerned about the low number of people we're able to help, $125,000. I mean, that's about $17,000, $18,000 per roof. Is that the going rate, especially at 61605? I would think we're able to help more than seven people.
That is, yes, the going rate for roofs.
So it is that high now for smaller homes. We're looking at $17,000 to $18,000 per roof. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Councilman, it does include gutters, soffits. I mean, it's just not, it's a roof replacement. It's not reshingling. It's a, these properties that apply, it's a completely new roof, where you're getting down to everything. So it's not just a reshingling, but the average scope of all of those, that's what the prices we're seeing. Sometimes it's a little less, depending on the size. Sometimes it's a little more, depending on the steepness. But that's about the average price the last year.
Thank you.
I need a motion to approve the proposed agreement with the Peoria City County Health Department with a budget amendment coming at a later time. Moved by Councilmember Jackson, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clark?
23-315 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request for the following. A, approve a contract with JIMAX for the environmental cleanup of 3560 Southwest Adams, utilizing U.S. Environmental Protection Agency cleanup grant funds and tax increment financing funds in the total amount of $784,237.48. And B, approve a contract with PIPCO for the installation of a suppression line to 3560 Southwest Adams, utilizing $74,230 in rebuild grant funds. And C, approve a contract with JIMAX for the demolition of 3550 Southwest Adams in the amount of $23,750, utilizing American Rescue Plan funds. And D, adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria 2023 revised annual budget relating to the use of Eagle View TIF fund balance in the amount of $261,000. We will need separate votes on all four of these, and D will require a 2/3 vote of corporate members voting, no less than six votes.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Director?
Thank you, Mayor. So the item in front of you has been a long process for staff to get here. We knew back in 2013, when we started this process of acquiring these parcels, that it wasn't going to be a quick solution to clean up an existing brownfield. The item in front of you gets us to that final place where we can say that we have a clean site and a brownfield removed from our community. Back in 2013, we purchased these properties. It had been previously used as a junkyard, auto sales. There were probably, at the time, maybe 2,000 or 3,000 tires at the location, a multitude, many cars at the property. And we got those cleaned up, but the soil remained contaminated. We received a grant from the United States EPA for a majority of the cleanup work. In addition, we've received a rebuild grant from the state of Illinois to get the site closer to where it's able to be marketable to a private entity, get it back on the tax rolls, and hopefully bring some jobs to that area based on its location. The items in front of you is kind of the next step in that process. Item A includes the cleanup portion of the grant. We put it out for bid. It came in more than the grant we had available, which is why we're requesting additional TIF funds. But this will allow for the entire site to have all of the contamination removed, clean soil put on, and a new fence around the property as well to ensure future illegal dumping. dumping doesn't occur at that site. Item B gets us closer to repurposing the site. It adds a suppression line going into the property, which will allow if someone does build on the future site, they'll have that suppression line in place. That money is paid for by the rebuild grant we have. And then, item C is the demolition. There's a smaller tattoo shop, that used to be a tattoo shop at one point, based on the sign that was there, the removal of that property that will be using previously budgeted American Rescue Plans. The next steps will likely be brought to you in the next month or so. We're having some conversations with DCEO about amending our current agreement. We originally had talked about fixing and rehabbing the building that's there, but based on the numbers that have come back and some different interests that we have from different businesses for end use, getting the property down to a slab so someone can build up from that is probably a more marketable and feasible thing for that item to ensure the long-term success. So we will still be bidding out that and the next steps, and they'll probably come to council the next month or so.
Questions for Director Doolin? Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd just like to move to approve item A.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any questions? Please cast your ballot. Item A. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Euler?
Move to approve item B.
Any questions? Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Euler?
Move to approve item C.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Euler?
Move to approve item D, and thank you, Director Doolin and your department, for all of the work over several years on this particular set of items.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. And Council Hayes?
Based on the members' presence, this will require seven votes this evening. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thanks for all your hard work. Madam Clerk?
23-316 is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comtroller with a request to receive and file the month ended July 31, 2023, an audited financial report.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn the floor over to our Finance Director, Director Craddy, to walk through this month's financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'll be brief, just kind of some of the highlights. Looking at the general fund again through the end of the month of July, revenues are down about $8.4 million year over year, but that was anticipated with some changes in how we allocated personal property replacement tax. Expenditures are up $7.4 million. That was heavily due to some change in how we do transfers, as well as some increased spending in our ARPA funds, as we're trying to get those spent before 2026. One item I was just going to draw attention to as we are getting into the budget season, I was going to draw your attention to items on page, really, three, four, and five that have the charts. What I wanted to really point out in these is that we continue to see strong sales tax numbers, numbers that are actually surpassing, at this point, year over year, the numbers that we had last year, which I think is different than we had anticipated during the budget process. Then, on the income tax side, the numbers are down about what we had anticipated during the budget process, based off the guidance from the Illinois Municipal League. On the personal property replacement tax side, we're also down, and we had anticipated 30% reduction this year, just due to some pullback in that tax area. One area, one item I will kind of just point out with this is, we made the decision during the budget process last year that we allocated more of these dollars directly to police and fire pension funds, and less of it went into the general fund. And that is a contributor to that $8 million reduction that you're seeing on the report this year, is due to those receipts going to, directly to the police and fire pension fund and not to the general fund. And then in terms of property taxes, those are coming in as anticipated, and I don't see any issues in that area. Overall, I think the financial position of the city continues to stay strong, and obviously, we will have a lot more conversations starting October 17 on that, so I'll open the floor to any questions on this report.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Craddy, what is the theory behind directly funding something like the pension fund, not running it through the general fund?
So...
I'm not questioning it, I just...
No, so when it comes to state law associated with pension plans, is our required contributions are required to be made based off the state minimum requirements. State revenue that we collect, i.e. personal property placement tax, income tax, if we are not making our contributions, can be diverted directly to the pension plans. So in this case, it makes sense to go ahead and put those funds directly into the police and fire pension funds, as in having it come into the general fund and transfer it out.
And, Councilman, don't worry. Over the next 17 years, you're going to have plenty of time to take general fund dollars out and put it towards pensions.
Yep.
Yeah, I know. But, no, thank you. That just seemed like one extra step to me, but I didn't, I didn't understand it properly. On page nine, you and I spoke about these items, but just for, first of all, we have in the expenditure table, the city council number, which, and I still don't quite understand why the city council number is so high anyway, but we are now at 106% of our annual budgeted amount. Could you go into that a little bit, please?
Absolutely. Kind of based off our conversation today, I went in and looked into the detail of what's in the council budget. There's about $180,000 in costs associated with the rail study that should not be in the council budget but was charged here, so that will be transferred out. So on the next month's report, you will see that under the Culture and Recreation section and not under the council budget. So it is misleading in terms of the council budget being over budget because those funds weren't budgeted to be spent out of there.
Is, okay, is there anything else in the council budget that doesn't really refer to the council?
I'd have to look into a little bit more, and I can look into that as part of the budget process, but that was the largest item that jumped off the page to me when I was reviewing it.
Annishe?
Thank you.
Well, I think that there's probably $30,000 for the expense for the mentoring program that the mayor has rolled out, but that also has $30,000 of revenue that's listed in there, but from an accounting standpoint, it's referenced in the council's budget because it's the mayor and council's budget.
Okay, I think that what I'm after is, I think that's quite proper. I don't have a problem with that. $529,000, I'd like to see a little breakdown on that. And then, could you explain the 217% overage on the miscellaneous and other charges in our expenses, I'm sorry, in our revenues?
As much as I would love to take credit for that number, it really is simply just interest rates are higher than they have been over the last 15 years, and the city has cash balances that are higher than they've been in a number of years. And so, we did not anticipate to receive this amount of interest earnings this year. My estimate at this point is we'll get close to $3 to $3.5 million in interest earnings this year alone because of where interest rates are.
Director Craddy, we're perfectly willing to give you credit for that, but thank you, sir, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You just added one question there, this last comment. You don't, we have over $200 million total in all different accounts. You don't think that money, that money will be spent within the year, correct? I'm just thinking about the, at 5%, that's $10 million. You said you forecast only $3 million in revenues from interest, correct?
And so, this coming year, we'll see a reduction because we, there are planned expenditures in our capital funds, our sewer fund, our stormwater funds. If you remember from the budget conversation last year, and we'll be reviewing that again this year, we had anticipated keeping our reserve levels above 25%, or probably having cash reserves in the neighborhood of $80 million between all the funds through about 2027, and then there would have to be some considerations of what happened next. So I think we will continue to get some level of interest earnings higher than what the average has been the last 10 years, but we will start to see a decline in those as we start to spend down some of our cash reserves.
Plus, per our conversation today, or yesterday, we've now distributed the money to the Civic Center, correct?
The $20 million in debt was distributed to them last month, so you will see that in the August report.
And as you're well aware, there's only one account that bothers me all the time, and the last question, the only one that has a negative balance. So today, we spent $45,000, $50,000, I believe, on garbage cans. Where does the money come from if we're in the negative?
So it does come out of the garbage fund, and that was part of their overall budget, so we are still slated to have a positive net income in the garbage fund to start taking care of the negative fund balance in that fund this year.
Thank you, Director Craddy. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. You want to make a motion, Councilmember Seer?
Yes. Move to, is that approve or accept? What is it?
Receive and file.
Receive and file. Move to receive and file.
Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business?
There is none.
Okay. Then we'll move on to new business.
Does anyone have any new business? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm old, and I remember a lot of things that happened a long time ago. There's a, there's a former member of the city council, a person by the name of Dick Van Norman.
Dave who?
Dick Van Norman.
Oh, okay.
Who passed away this past week. So if anyone remembers him, please offer a prayer and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Any other new business? Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council, and I believe we had one card submitted.
One, Jessen, Jessaman, Jess Hill.
Good evening, Madam Dr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Jessaman Hill. You got that right?
Yes.
This year marks 20 years I completed homeschooling. My midlife crisis told me to turn the personal baggage and microaggressions I endured from 1991 to 2003 into something positive. I gathered all the information I could find and printed out a guidebook. I call it the Central Illinois Homeschoolers Resource Guide. This booklet is for children and their parents to connect with the community, and traditional school kids may utilize it too, and it can be an effort to prevent those juvenile crimes which are increasing, stealing cars, stuff like that. I usually hear the following when it comes to bored kids and parents, you know? Where are the parents when these kids were stealing cars or committing gun crimes, or they need to have stuff for kids to do in this town? Oh, we do have stuff to do in this town, and kids don't want to be reading books and being in front of their screens all the time. They just need the right connections, and my goal is to lead them to the right connections, and especially if their neighborhood school doesn't offer extracurriculars. Now, I have a niece and nephew. They live in Davenport, Iowa, and they were involved in community theater, youth symphony orchestra, drum corps, and soccer. And every time I visit them, I'm like, man, Peoria stinks. They've got nothing on the Quad Cities, until I did my research and discovered that this town offers the same stuff, it's just that people don't know about it, until now. So, anybody listening at home or watching on Cable Channel 22, Parents and Guardians, if you have a pen and paper ready, if you would like a free copy of my premiere issue of the Central Illinois Homeschooling Resource Guide, send me an email at jhill85713@gmail.com. Put "resource guide" in the subject line with a brief message. Now, I believe if we can get enough children, parents, schools, even our city, to let folks know that there is stuff out there for kids to do, we can make a difference in this town for them. I mean, there is this old saying, you can't help those who don't want to be helped, but this is something I want to do. Thank you for letting me speak, and have a safe and good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Great job. Okay, Madam Clerk?
We do not have an executive session, so we are adjournment.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Moved by Councilmember Grayup, seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Please cast your ballots. Thank you for your service.